Because of war.
Can you?
And we don't get home.
I think I'm gonna give.
You can't go right to bed.
I, well, I took a shower.
Did you?
I took a shower, I scrolled a little bit. Uh, but ultimately, I think I'm gonna.
We're muted until we start.
Yeah, and then, you know. Did you notice?
I'm sure he appreciates where you're going.
Sure, what do you do about four days a week? I'm like, four days a week.
I can't hear you.
Jackie, who is muted till Connie arrives?
Okay.
I just popped up.
Have you that stuff?
I love how it looks. Case, no.
You done, you done. It's not me, it's not you.
Fine, man, it's a true issue.
Thanks, thanks.
Could you please? Try to help the kid out? So can you turn down your volume?
Oh, sorry about that. That was the problem, I was wondering.
Well, I appreciated the accusatory look you were, it sounded all of us. So we'll call to be ordered this meeting of the, um.
Human resources and labor.
Subcommittee, the clerk, could please call the rules.
Chief person Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin? Mr.?
Here, there's a bit of an echo, I don't know.
We can hear you now, Jackie, so maybe I have to turn my volume up for that, Ramsey.
Unless the volume is on this?
No.
She bling bling.
It's a good sign.
I'm on.
What am I hitting, just this?
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Arty?
Yes.
All right.
We got the audios.
She's muted.
If you want, that'd be easier. Actually, no.
Is that you muting him?
Every time you speak, it's gonna pick it up from here too. So it's just gonna be.
She's unmuted now. Jackie?
Yes, I, I just unmuted myself to speak when you called on.
The moving camera does make a lot better though.
Is Mr. Bahu in person or is he on Zoom?
I'm not on the committee, I'm just here, sort of.
No, are you on Zoom or are you in person?
No, he's in person.
Okay, because that was when I heard the echo. I'm not hearing the echo now, I think we might have fixed it.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Storey's here. Okay, so, uh, meeting has been called to order. If we could start with our first item of business, which is the review of the transition plan.
Yes, Chief Person Martin, so there's a letter dated January 10th that was on the regular agenda. We proposed a plan to get ready for the transition. As we've been all of the directors are retiring on July 5th. I was hoping that the committee would authorize us to bring in another transportation director who can, um, shadow Mr. Dakota and learn, the ins and outs of the job in all, and be ready for when Mr. Dakota is unable to participate in our transportation, schedules and fixing things, so to speak. Additionally, we believe a router position like some other larger districts would help out and free the director for more strategic thinking and planning and parental communication and other communication. Uh, so the plan would be to immediately launch, uh, that router, uh, position. So they would be in the lower that position by the time we brought on, uh, the new director. And additionally, we're requesting that, like, the two clerical positions stay for the remainder of this, um, school year. I'm guessing the committee will want some feedback on how well this is working, what benefits they were from the new budget discussion. So we did not, at this time, be recommending that the two clerks, continue on until next year at the time, until we get some data and feedback. If it's successful, we can leave it rolling. And I attached the router, um, job description, uh, which shows that all rewrote communicated about its plan, routing certain situations and communicate, uh, with stakeholders, principals, the bus company to facilitate routing and getting children through. Listen to further, uh, is also here to ask any questions, see what's, uh, helpful and graphic regarding the router position. City of Worcester, has actually two routers, one for the specialized product, the one for the regular red department. And that is basically their job to do that most of the day. Now, presently, right now, I'm doing the routing. All of it, and I have the two clerks who do both, mostly the data entry. So to get it to that point, so it's on the map, so I can route it. Right now, I have a clerk that is, um, I believe what committee woman Bill Rossi had mentioned, that she was hoping to have somebody shadow me before the was posted and maybe one of the clerks, and we've done that. And, uh, a clerk that, uh, I hope will apply for the position, um, would be up and ready for that transition to help with the new transportation director at that time. So I think it'd be an icy, easy transition to do that. She's very capable, and I hope she applies for the job.
I defer if anyone has any questions before I ask mine. Jackie, I don't know if you have any questions?
I, oh, sorry. I, I think, a- and I think that transition plan makes perfect sense. My concern, and I think I brought it up on the floor, was, uh, the job description, just there's no requirement for education, no requirement for transportation experience. Now, I wonder if there could be an explanation for that.
Considering the routing position, um, a high school diploma would only be necessary. It's more of the the amount of time that you've spent on rural roads. Let's put it that way. Uh, understanding the roads, the streets, uh, easiest way to get from one place to another. And, like I said, the ones like Clark said, I have, uh, been in the bus business for 25 years. She was a bus driver and she's been a clerk for mine for a while. And, uh, I have been teaching her along the way, and she's excellent, excellent.
I, that sounds awesome to me. I love the idea of promoting from within. But again, why would you have both not requiring a degree and not requiring experience? If you have somebody who's experienced in transportation, who doesn't have a degree, then you could have something in the job description that says, you know, in lieu of a degree, transportation experience would be considered or something, but to, to not have the either requirement, it's, i- it just seems like it's a pretty high salary for somebody with preferred transportation experience and no degree required. That, that's basically my concern.
Do I, I do understand your, your concern, Storey. I will tell you that the two routers that from the Worcester Public Schools that are each making $90,000 and $95,000 each. This is a, a very low price for a very good router. So I think the whole public schools would be getting a, a really good deal.
To those routers for $90,000 have transportation experience, I would ex- expect that they do. And perhaps they have over five years of transportation experience.
Um, actually, both are bus drivers as well. Yeah, just like the clerk that I have.
You have any questions?
I didn't think we had much, uh, many other options, sorry, Ms. Martin.
It's okay.
Many other options, Mr. Arty, is that, uh, the number of applicants weren't, weren't many. And therefore, I took it upon myself to make sure that school department would not be caught come August, at the end of August, beginning September, where, as you know, I worked 30 to 40 days straight. And it's just, that's what it takes, so.
No, I, and I, I understand what you're saying, I'm just thinking that you've got somebody internal in mind that person has transportation experience, correct?
Correct.
I'm just looking for you to, um, have the job description, have some more substantive qualifications that go with it, that would justify the salary. And, and to me, a salary of 60 to 70 is a decent salary.
Yeah, just, just very quickly, um, you know, I think we're all looking for a, a smooth transition. And it's kind of a unique situation that we're in here too, because it's not a lot of people would have that type of the experience. Now, the young lady that you're, that's working with you at this point, how long has she been working in with you?
I think now it's been 10 years.
Yeah, see, that's great, because she, she's gonna know that, that particular job, I think.
Which is even more difficult coming in, Conley, is the type of software that we use for, uh, for routing is very unique. And it's actually, in fact, we were the third school district to ever get VersaTrans in 1988. And a lot of the software packages out is under TransFinder, which is a different. So to have VersaTrans and have somebody who knows VersaTrans, you might find another one in Iowa. But you're not gonna find them. So to have that one person who would have that experience and know how to route and is actually working with me under the conditions that we're in, like, right now.
Right, right.
We're only running 48 buses, which we can't go any lower than what we're going. I know I may be speaking off topic, but it's something I think the committee should keep their eyes on. The greater little vote there in the last year of the contract this year. We utilize their buses, right? They handle probably 20 of our runs every day. If we don't, if they don't get that contract this year, you will definitely need to go to two miles on everybody. Including us even going over bridges and everything, you know, because you won't have.
I mean, not enough buses. One and three quarters.
Three quarters for an elementary, mile and a half for middle school. So it's something to keep an eye on. I know there's another company watching, I think, in the background that might be looking to bid on this.
Yeah.
Where in the past, as Ms. Martin knows, NRC was always the monopoly. And it's like, I'm hearing rumors that there's another company that could be, well, might be willing to take, take on a bid, so.
Yeah, and I, you know, as far as the college degree is concerned, I, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily, it doesn't bother them, it'd be nice if they did, but, you know, this, this, I think in this type position, it's, it is very unique. I don't think a lot of people have this ability, should we say. Yeah, I mean, I, I feel, um, I mean, the other guy with the experience here, I, I'm certainly not. I'm lucky I could find my way home, never mind. You know, take X amount of kids and move from one part to the city to the other. Uh, and I realize it is a big job, so, uh, again, I, I appreciate what you have, what you have done. And I'm, I'm also very, uh, very happy that you're gonna stay a while, certainly, and try to, you know, to make a good, smooth transition. And to be honest with you, you've been around this, this particular, um, position for how many years now?
18.
18 years. I mean, I, I have to take what, what you say is, is probably the, the best route, you're gonna know more about.
I mean, Dr. Hall and I have talked extensively on what this plan would look like, how it would come out.
So I, yeah, I feel comfortable with, uh, you know, with the recommendation that certainly at this point.
Mr. Bahu, any questions?
Well, do you think this person will put into this job, John?
Well, she is, I believe, maybe Mary, you can help me out with this. I don't know if you can answer a question. She's a class six, uh?
Uh, probably six, yeah.
Six, so that means she's probably making 58.
No, maybe 62, I would guess, 60.
So she's gonna move up?
Right, and she's gonna have to, that salary will have to be adjusted.
Adjusted.
She's gonna take on more responsibility.
Right.
And, yeah, exactly.
But is this?
This is a salary position, too, so. What salary position, Dr. Hall, or is it say, uh, excuse me?
So is this person getting overtime currently?
Currently, well, the only time that my two clerks do it are due in August and September.
Okay. I, I think the idea of, you know, having a college degree, I'm not sure that's, that's vital when it comes to transportation. Um, I think maybe if it could be worded, it looks like it is, but maybe five years of transportation experience on that, just to sort of, you know, um, give Ms. Darity, um, you know, some guidance for what she's, you know, recommending. It sounds like this person, hopefully, that she'll live for, she has that five years of experience. And that we could have the router position and we could begin to sort of, you know, progress and get ready to hire a transportation director that will work with her.
Right, yeah.
I just wanna kind of understand what we're talking about, John. So currently, it's you and two clerks.
Correct.
Okay, and what this would bring us to temporarily would be you, the new director, we hope, would come on board before the end of, you know, in May, uh, before, you know, or as early as possible. We'd create a new router position, and then there would still be two clerks?
Then we would add another clerk.
Okay, so you would just, so you're basically.
Go from three to five, or a three.
Temporarily, and then when.
Then go back to four.
Then it goes four.
Right, right, exactly.
Like I said, the chan- the new transportation director that would come on, even after three months, it's still gonna take him a while. That's why that router position is even more vital. Yeah, making sure that this, that the start of the year goes off without a hitch.
I mean, I'm very comfortable with the, with the router position and adding that on. I mean, I think the complexities of our transportation are mind numbing. So I mean, having somebody who has that experience, I think is great. The one thing I would say is that, you know, kind of hand crafting a job description for one person is not the way to go. So what I would say is that, you know, I do think that I would agree, I don't think a college degree impacts this. I, I don't think it would be necessary for the router position. And I do think just having in, you know, putting in an actual number of three to five years' experience.
Makes sense.
Um, I mean, it doesn't have to be even specific to buses, it could be someone, you know, who's working. Exactly, a delivery, you know, there are a lot of different ways that they could be, get that kind of experience. Uh, but again, I think if we put three to five years' experience preferred, um, but not required, that gives us a, a broad net.
My, my only concern at, at this time period is that we're talking next week, February. So if we did bring somebody else on other than the, my clerk, that person would have to already have a, some sort of, uh, routing experience with VersaTrans.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not advocating for that at all. I, I mean, I, I think the idea that we can bring somebody on who has the experience and who, you know, we're pleased with their performance and they've been part of the team for 10 years, that's great. I'm just saying a job description shouldn't.
I understand, yeah, you're right.
It shouldn't drive in that direction. Out in the park. Yeah, thank you very much, yeah, they stick up on you sometimes.
Still got it.
Yeah. So would our next steps be then for this subcommittee to vote to approve this plan moving forward, which includes bringing on a new transportation director as soon as possible? That posi- is that position already posted? I'm looking at you like you can't.
We, we just have to revise it because we changed the start date to April 1st.
Okay, so then at our next committee meeting, which isn't until the first week in February, we'd be approving both the revised transportation director posting and this router posting if the subcommittee votes to support it. Um, and then we could get them both approved at that February meeting, get them posted right away. Okay, um, are there any other questions, concerns? Do those routers for ninety thousand dollars have transportation experience? I would expect that they do. And perhaps they have over five years of transportation experience.
Actually, both are bus drivers as well. Yeah, just like the clerk that I have.
I didn't think we had much, many other options, sorry, Miss.
That's okay.
Many other options, Mr. Artie, is that the number of applicants weren't, weren't many. And therefore, I took it upon myself to make sure that school department would not be caught come August, at the end of August, beginning September, where, as you know, I work thirty to forty days straight. And it's, that's what it takes, so.
No, I, and I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just thinking that you've got somebody internal in mind, that person has transportation experience, correct?
Correct.
I'm just looking for you to have the job description, have some more substantive qualifications that go with it, that would justify the salary. And, and to me, a salary of sixty to seventy is a decent salary.
Yeah, just, just very quickly, you know, I think we're all looking for a, a smooth transition. And it's kind of a unique situation that we're in here too, because it's not a lot of people would have that type of experience. Now, the young lady that you're, that's working with you at this point, how long has she been working in with you?
I think now it's been ten years.
Yeah, see, that's great, because she, she's gonna know that, that particular job, I think.
What's even more difficult coming in, Conley, is the type of software that we use for, for routing is very unique, and it's actually, in fact, we were the third school district to ever get VersaTrans in nineteen eighty-eight. And a lot of the software packages out is under TransFinder, which is a different. So to have VersaTrans, and have somebody who knows VersaTrans, you might find another one in Iowa, but you're not gonna find them. So to have that one person who would have that experience and know how to route, and is actually working with me under the conditions that we're in, like, right now.
Right, right.
We're only running forty-eight buses, which we can't go any lower than where we're going. I know I may be speaking off topic, but it's something I think the committee should keep their eyes on. The greater little vote during the last year of the contract this year. We utilize their buses, right? They handle probably twenty of our runs every day. If we don't, if they don't get that contract this year, you'll definitely need to go to